I think, oh my goodness. Oh gee, that's been a change.
I'm surprised you did, so I didn't say the line.
Sorry.
So what is it about Jerry and I?
It'll work out.
Wait a minute. What is it? Oh, maybe I should switch to Jerry. Should I?
I've been sitting with lots of Americans.
I have one.
Yes, I've actually been to the movies.
I think we're gonna do that.
Lots of them.
No, I better not. I don't want to go like this.
Well, I actually saw a stage show, The Wizard of Oz, last night.
No, it was more like everybody else is getting a different feeling room.
It was at the, um, oh god, I can't think of the name. It's one where, it's a community theater place.
You're gonna be the only one on the video.
I know, but I felt a little left out.
Mr. Frederickson, how we doing?
Yeah.
Ready to go? All right, we're gonna call this, uh, meeting to order. There's a meeting, this meeting is a public session of the Council Rock Board of School Directors. This meeting is being recorded by the Council Rock School District and may be recorded by members of the audience. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I, the Pledge of Allegiance, is as follows. I am the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands in one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as far.
Have a roll call, please, and welcome back, Madam Secretary.
Here.
Mr. Bylock?
Here.
Dr. Foster?
I am here.
Mrs. McKessy?
Here.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes, present.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Block?
Here.
Mr. Abramson?
Here.
And Mr. Grobson, vacation?
Yes, he is. And we've reorganized seats, so I apologize in advance if it's hard for me to get around the table quickly. Uh, wanna take a quick opportunity before the Superintendent's Report to officially welcome Dr. Frazier to the board table for your first meeting?
Absolutely. It's a pleasure to be here.
Feels like you've been here a long time, Mark.
It does, it does, it does.
Lots of good luck to you.
Thanks so much.
Lord's yours.
Truly, it is a pleasure to be up here in this chair. I, I'm looking at Mr. Klein, uh, over there. I think he's feeling pretty comfortable right about now. Uh, my, my transition, uh, here to Council Rock has been absolutely fantastic. Uh, truly have just enjoyed every single moment of it, and really, it's no exaggeration when I tell you that I have absolutely already fallen in love with the Council Rock School District. Uh, I'm on day sixteen, so that's saying a lot, uh, to be able to feel that way already. And, and the early days of my transition have been spent really engaging with people, uh, getting out, uh, to all fifteen of our schools, uh, meeting one-on-one with all of our cabinet members, and also meeting one-on-one with our, uh, our Board of School Directors. So, it, it's the people that make the place. We all know that, and this place indeed is very special. I had, I had an inkling, I had a, a sense of that, uh, certainly previously, but if anything, my expectations have been exceeded. So that's, that's been absolutely wonderful. And, uh, Mr. Klein, I do thank you, uh, for the tremendous work you've already done in assisting me with the, the transition. Now, if you notice, Mr. Klein has a, a nameplate there that says Assistant to the Superintendent. Uh, we can probably just flip that over or get you a new one because he's really Superintendent Emeritus. He is my mentor, uh, and, uh, and his value to me has been tremendous. He'll be here, uh, for a total of two months. It's hard to believe we're already almost, uh, one month into that, but, uh, I, I certainly wish it could be an even longer duration of time. As I mentioned, I have been getting out to, uh, to the schools. I've been out to, uh, almost all of them at this point, and, uh, certainly while you're out there, it's impossible not to notice a lot of the hard work that's going on this summer, getting ready for the return of our students here this fall. There's a lot of construction going on, capital projects going on, chief among them, uh, removal of modular classrooms, which is very exciting to see. That was a major effort by this board, a tremendous decision, in my opinion, and, uh, it's gonna be, uh, a fantastic safety enhancement, uh, once we open school back up here in a few short weeks. Uh, Rolling Hills, I, I got to see the pits being filled in over there, and the walls going up at Rolling Hills Elementary. Uh, the addition of Goodknow looks absolutely fantastic. I was out there just a few days ago. Uh, you can see sidewalk repairs as you drive throughout the district. So really, a ton of work going on this summer. Uh, Mr. Taylor, thank you, thank your crew, uh, for the absolutely wonderful work that's being done, uh, getting ready for students. And I'll tell you that I've been very impressed walking around our schools, as I'm getting to know principals, getting to know facilities, seeing the number of teachers that have been in our schools, uh, and not just being there, but working, and, and getting ready. Uh, to see that in the month of July, on some of these beautiful days, i- it speaks to a level of commitment, passion, that these folks have. Uh, the other day at Goodknow, I saw an entire grade level of teachers, there were six of them, uh, sitting down, working collaboratively and planning together, which, uh, which excited me, and, and should excite that school, and, uh, and I've really seen that all throughout the school district. Uh, probably one of the coolest things that I've seen is over at Hillcrest the other day, kindergarten classroom, uh, Mrs. Zagola, uh, kindergarten teacher. You walk in there, she has these student desks circa nineteen forty-seven, and they have a wood top on them, and she lacquers them herself. Uh, every summer she does it. Does one side one year, the opposite side the other year, and so they were freshly done. You walked in there and you needed sunglasses. It wa- it was, it was blind. Uh, it was absolutely wonderful to see, and she was in there, that, that work was already done, but she was in the room, and, uh, she had just, uh, gone out and gotten a piece of carpet, a, a big piece of carpet for read-aloud time for the kiddos to be able to sit on the floor and enjoy, and enjoy that. So our teachers are hard at work, our, uh, our facilities department is hard at work, and really, this entire school district is. We're very, very excited, uh, for the return of our students in thirty-seven days. That's our magic number, thirty-seven days. So, uh, not, not that we're counting, but thirty-seven days. Uh, I know, I am excited and I cannot wait. One piece of information that I wanna share with, uh, with the public is that, uh, again, as we look to, uh, open up the school year here in a few weeks, is that at the elementary level, we have made the decision, uh, with administrative support and school board support, to add three elementary sections. Uh, we added a kindergarten section at Welsh Elementary, a kindergarten section at Soul Finestone Elementary, and a fifth grade section at Rolling Hills Elementary. And the reason for that is because there exists a, a June thirtieth deadline to enroll, to ensure that your child will be able to attend that home school. And in fact, in all three of those cases, we had, uh, one, if not more than one, student who, uh, was registered by that deadline, uh, or, or prior to that deadline. So, so we're very happy, uh, to be able to provide those, uh, those additional teachers, and again, thank the administration for their work, thank this board for the support in making that happen, and doing the right things, uh, for our students and, uh, and for the parents as well. And, and lastly, one piece I do wanna touch on quickly is, uh, is PSSA results, and I'm only mentioning this because, uh, if you haven't already seen this news, you probably will be soon. Uh, ironic timing, today, late this afternoon, we received, uh, our very raw numbers, uh, as did every school district in the Commonwealth. We're nowhere near ready to, to be able to, to vet, vet those and process those. But what I wanna share with you is that statewide, we are going to see, uh, significant drops in the percent of students who are score and proficient or advanced. So the, the question obviously is why. The answer to the question is that it's a brand-new PSSA that was implemented last year, based upon a brand-new set of standards, the Pennsylvania Core Standards. So, so I share this with you because in Council Rock, uh, in many school districts, there may be, uh, a drop in scores, and it could be a significant drop in scores relative to years prior. So I do want to explain here for the first time, and we'll certainly communicate this to our community in other ways, uh, that, uh, that this is happening statewide. So for instance, I'll tell you that in English Language Arts, the average drop for the PSSAs across the state was nine point four percent. Pretty significant. In mathematics, thirty-five point four percent. So very, very significant drops. These drops were most significant at the middle level, uh, grade seven and eight. Uh, you have double-digit drops in English Language Arts. And in math, for instance, just to paint this picture for you a bit, statewide, uh, the grade seven drop is forty-three point six percent, and in grade eight, the drop is forty-three point seven percent. This is the result at this point, a first year of implementation of a revised assessment based upon, uh, new standards, the PA four standards. So at this point, just a point of awareness, uh, as soon as we're ready to, uh, process our data, make meaning out of it, analyze that data, uh, certainly, we will be sure to share our results with you, and, uh, and, and then accept the subsequent step for us is action planning. But, uh, just to give you a sense of what's happening statewide in terms of those PSSA results. Those are numbers. The most important number, though, again, is thirty-seven. Thirty-seven days and counting. Uh, we will continue to work hard getting ready for, uh, the opening of the school year, and, uh, I hope, uh, some of our students who, uh, may be watching, or maybe their parents are watching, tell them we'll be ready for them. We'll have smiles on our faces, and we hope that, uh, that you do as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frazier. Looked and sounded pretty at home there. Certainly a lot more confident than I was my first time behind this mic.
It feels good up here.
Well done. Uh, with that, we'll move to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We would ask that you limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Please consider the fact that there may be young children in the audience or watching this broadcast live on CRTV when speaking. It is our goal to maintain a respectful environment so that members of our community have an equal opportunity to address the board without interruption. While the board welcomes your ideas and will consider them in deliberating an issue, we may not respond to your comments or questions. Uh, first I have Ryan Kramer.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, uh, good evening. Dr. Frazier, welcome.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Klein, thank you for your years of service. I drafted an impromptu, off-the-cuff, uh, speech here, so please excuse in advance. Um, my name is Ryan Kramer. Uh, I live in, uh, Washington Crossing. Um, I'm an alumnus of Council Rock North, uh, class of two thousand and four. I'm, uh, currently at the University of Pennsylvania. I study, um, German Studies, uh, Linguistics, and several other languages. Uh, so obviously, um, I'm here to speak about the, um, phasing out of the German language program. Uh, I don't know at what, um, point we are in the, in that phasing out, or what the board has concluded, but I'd like to share this, uh, with you, and I don't mean to come across as boasting, but there's a reason why I, I will be speaking as I am. I studied German at Council Rock for several years. Without question, it was the single most important subject for my studies. I went on to major in both German Studies and Linguistics at the University of Pennsylvania, as I said. I've earned several awards. I've been self-employed as a translator, interpreted for monolingual students and staff studying abroad at the Free University of Berlin and the University of Vienna. I've used German professionally in the legal field in Austria. I've taught at a local Danube Swavian German Society's language school, and have been able to completely change the way in which I communicate with my family members, as I am of, uh, German and Austrian descent, um, both young and old. Uh, moreover, my learning of the German language has taught me how to go on to learn other languages fluently, including Mandarin Chinese and Swahili. It is important to note that German is unquestionably, uh, the most important language for business in all of Europe, aside from the seemingly omnipresent English, uh, language. One could argue it is at least as important as English, if not more, in engineering and pharmaceuticals, given German predominance in these fields. Europeans are surprised to hear an American speak at a C-two native lang-, uh, level, uh, to the point that they don't believe he could possibly be American. They believe him to be either German-American or Swiss. Uh, this points to the jarring reality of how many Americans are perceived to be ignorant of other cultures and languages. This stereotype can only be changed by offering intensive instruction in all main European and Asian languages, especially German, for the points that I've already pointed out. In closing, to remove what I consider to be the most important foreign language fr- from Council Rock's program would be an utter shame, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, but exceedingly foolish. And not to say that anyone's foolish here, I just don't think it would be the right move. It wouldn't be prudent. So I respectfully and humbly, uh, beseech you to keep it. If, I, I've, I've spoken with, uh, um, people in influence, power in the board, and in the district, teachers, and I, I know that, um, they say, well, there's an argument, well, we don't just, we wanna phase it out because we cut it off right away. Some kind of argument that we don't want them to get into the second level and then not have anything year three or four, and certainly, they can make, you know, a cogent argument for that, but I, I, I don't accept the end result. They're, they need to do something. If it's finances, are they building more schools? Are they, are they, are they diverting money elsewhere? Not saying that's wrong, but this is a, a vital language, and for future generations not to have access to it, I mean, you're cut off at, at level two or whatever, that, that's, respectively, that's unacceptable. We need to be able to compete, and German is a language of competition in the world. We know how influential Germany is in the EU financially, and the other aforementioned fields that I, that I mentioned. So I, I really think, and not just, not just, uh, me, but many people, I mean, listen to the, to, um, to the people in the, in the audience, your fellow members of the board, teachers, uh, professors at Penn, o- o- Princeton, o- other, you, you know, um, Penn State, other, um, universities, see what they have to say about the importance of instruction of, of German, and other languages, like I mentioned. I, I, we need to come up with a different solution, not just phasing it out, or I, I heard possibly from, uh, one influential person, I won't name his name out of respect, he said, well, maybe they'll do a virtual, uh, virtual instruction. Okay, that's better than nothing. But then I think, what about these teachers? Now, I, I, I stated, you know, I've accomplished all this, blah, 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 and that's great. I don't wanna be a braggart. If I hadn't had the opportunity to learn from the great staff you have at Council Rock North, uh, where I studied, um, including Roy Harvey, uh, Mark Burnett, Deborah Davis, Barbara Kavanaugh, uh, Shreeda Warg, you know, Ed Al, it just keeps going on, it wouldn't have been possible. I, that is the single, like I said, the single most important way I got into a great school that's, that's now enabled me to have great career opportunities. And, uh, I'm just, I'm grateful to them, I'm grateful, uh, to the district in general, and I just hope we continue this. And if, if you guys have any questions for me, or, I, I just think this has to be collaborative, and we, we just can't, uh, we can't just say, just chop it off. It would be very foolish. So thank you for your time, and...
Thank you.
Bobby Blankenmeyer?
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Bobby Blankenmeyer, and this upcoming year, I will be a sophomore at Council Rock High School South. Uh, recently, as you've heard, there's been much talk of removing German from the language offerings for middle and high school students. As a student currently enrolled in German, I cannot even begin to say how much the language has helped me. Uh, the class has increased not only my understanding of the German language, but also the English language as well. It has also opened the door to an entirely different culture from my own. Uh, German is currently the only language in Council Rock, this, the school district, with an exchange program, and when the students arrived at our school, interacting with and befriending them was truly an unforgettable experience. Uh, this previous year, I was lucky enough to participate in the National German Exam. For my performance, I was awarded with a cash prize and the chance to interview for a study trip to Germany. All of these experiences are ones that I would not want any of my fellow students in the lower grades to miss out on. My family knows firsthand how disappointing it can be if German is not one of the options for language study. My sister is the only one of my four siblings who was not offered the German language as a class, and it has been major disappointment for her. Uh, many say that dwindling enrollment in the language is a reason for phasing out German, but I firmly believe that this is because not enough students are being exposed to the language at an earlier age. If students were given the chance to test or try out the languages before choosing one to learn, I think there would almost definitely be an increase in German students like myself. In today's modern society, Germany is one of the most widely spoken business languages worldwide. It is a language of practicality, order, and organization. I sincerely hope that our district continues to offer the language from eighth to twelfth grade, perhaps even earlier. It's been a wonderful experience for me and my classmates, and I couldn't imagine students in lower grades missing out on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Stiles?
Um, my name is Margaret Stiles. I have, uh, three students, uh, who are three children who have been, uh, students and products of the German program here at Council Rock. Um, years ago, twelve years ago, when we had to move, uh, we had outgrown our house, we were looking around, and I said, I want Council Rock. I want their German program. I'm of German descent. I am a German teacher at Lowermoreland, and we partner with your school district on the exchange program. Uh, all three of my, my children, like I said, have been through the German program. They have, um, um, ta- gotten the advantage of experiencing the exchange program. Each one of them has gone overseas. We've hosted every year, somebody from the program in our home. Our, our home is an international home, and, um, I think it's important in the world, my children are learning that they are world citizens, they are not just Council Rock citizens, and this program has enabled them to have these experiences, to still be benefiting from these experiences. My youngest, right now, is, uh, enrolled in the AP for this coming year, and, uh, hopes to score well enough to get college credit. My son did get college credit from the AP exam, and, like I said, they have all benefited so much from, uh, this program. And it's important because this program not only offers the exchange, but year-round, these students, um, can be in the club, they can be in the AA, take the AATG exam, and earn scholarships and award money, uh, for scoring well in that. Um, they have, uh, chances at the German scholarships to all of the major, uh, important universities in our area, and, um, so they benefit not only from, um, monetarily, but they benefit also intellectually, uh, realizing that they are in this world with other cultures, and it's important to acknowledge all of them and to be able to communicate with them. And, um, so I really hope that you reconsider phasing out the German program, uh, because we always say that we put our children first, and I think this would really prove to them that we do put them first, because we realize that this is a, a program that many of them can benefit from, and, um, that they should be given that opportunity for such a wonderful, wonderful program. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough. I stand here tonight to welcome Dr. Frazier. I wish you the very best of luck in longevity in Council Rock. I've lived at Council Rock since nineteen eighty-four, when Jack Byrne was the superintendent. Jack Byrne took Council Rock from what was a farming school district to one that scored in the top one percent of Pennsylvania. He retired in nineteen ninety-one after seventeen years as Council Rock Superintendent. Then came Dave Blatt in two interims, Dr. Scott, Tim Kirby, and Mark Klein, and now Council Rock, welcome to you. It was in the mid-nineties that I started attending school board meetings to lobby for a second high school. During that time, I went to all but about three facilities meetings for five consecutive years. I served on some district-wide committees, including the Chancellor of Reuse Committee and the Chancellor of Legacy Committee, a committee to find and award a diploma to the World War II vets who had left to fight their country before graduating from Council Rock. I served on the Capital Planning Committee in two thousand and six, and the most recent one that gave its report in June of two thousand and fourteen. I wholeheartedly believe in the worth of public education as the bedrock to democracy. I have always said, if we cannot do public education right in Council Rock, then the promise of publication, of public education to this country is in jeopardy. I say this because, for the most part, the citizens of Council Rock have loved and support their school district. Most feel towards Council Rock like parents who do not see the flaws in their children, so these flaws can best be seen by an outsider. I remember when asked, when asked from one superintendent what surprised him the most about Council Rock, he said, the number of trailers. They were first put up in nineteen eighty-six as a temporary structure, and this year, in two thousand and five, will be the first year that no student in Council Rock will be sitting in a trailer to be educated. Even after Columbine and Newtown, Connecticut, Council Rock still had students going outside its brick-and-mortar buildings to be educated in trailers. Last year, when the board voted to take every student out of trailers, I said, I should be doing a cartwheel, but President Block heard it as I owe the board a cartwheel. I did not lobby for years to take trailers off so I could do a cartwheel. I did so because I believed that would be for the betterment of students. This year, my focus is for a five-year technology plan developed, uh, by a committee that is open to the public. I do this for many reasons, including the allocation of computers is the same that it has been for twelve years, and that is despite drastic drops in enrollment at some schools. Tonight, the board will accept a donation of commuter, computers from a PTO. Elementary PTOs use their hard-earned money to supplement the technology that their specific school would like to have beyond what the district allocates. Some, some schools have more active PTOs than others, and it can, can afford more than others. Some schools want laptops, and others want tablets. There is no district-wide vision. Last year, one school, Soul Finestone, was told the district could not accept their donations unless their payment for access point to support the new devices. At the same time last year, another school was able to take all their donated money just to buy the computers because they were one of the newly renovated schools, Churchville. I think this is wrong, and that public education should not be about the schools that can raise the most money, being able to have more access than other schools in technology. I am hoping, as the new superintendent of Council Rock, that you will see this as a flaw and make steps to improve technology access for every student in Council Rock. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there any further public comment?
Good evening. Marilyn Scarp, Newtown Township. Welcome, Dr. Frazier. Um, I too have been at this microphone since the early nineties. I'm not gonna bore you with all the committees that I was on, but I would like to thank, uh, this school board and the school district for adding those classrooms, because long ago, at another location, we advocated for better class sizes. A class size committee was formed for that, and they in- instituted guidelines, I wish they had become policy, but for appropriate learning, and, um, I'm glad to see that this board still honors that commitment to excellence in education by keeping the class sizes appropriate and adding those classrooms. I question, though, that some people have advocated for, uh, I too served on the Capital Planning Committee and the, and the Growth Committee, and some people have been advocating for, uh, capacities to fill the schools at, uh, above ninety-five percent, and had that been something that the board had taken upon themselves and voted to approve, you would not be able to pu- add these classrooms, and in the future, add whatever classrooms are needed. So I'm glad to see that, uh, that you're adhering to, uh, some commitment to that ex- excellence in education and keeping the, uh, programs and, and the, uh, policies or, or the guidelines that we've instituted in the past. It's very important that we keep class sizes appropriate. Um, some people have been actually, um, advocating for raising class sizes, and that's not what a Council Rock education is all about. So thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Okay, as, as I said in the intro, typically, we don't address public comment. We may start to do that from time to time, just to ensure that there's clarity around the public comment and the messages out there. I did want everybody to know that as we get into the fall, several, all of us have, have received lots of, uh, lots of email and communication around this German program. So it's my understanding, uh, from Dr. Frazier, Ms. Brooks, that we'll add this to our academic standards discussion, and it'll be something the board will take a look at.
Yeah, I know.
Excellent. So just want everybody to know that. All right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Abramson, can I ask you to read that, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda items A through L as contained in the attachments to the agenda, subject to audit.
Second.
Is there any questions for the administration, any discussion?
Yeah, I have questions about item G, the Gallagher Benefit Services Consulting Agreement. I had some questions earlier about the commissions that offset the fee of a hundred and two thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, could you just give me the letter?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, it states in here compensation that there is a, a fee to be paid of a hundred and two thousand dollars a year, which may- may be offset by commissions. And we did have a discussion and it was shown to me how some of those commissions were offset, but my question, Christine.
Yeah, I was going to say, Christine, when you get a chance, when he's done, if you just introduce our friends from Gallagher.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
Is there ever an opportunity when the fee is greater than $102,000 a year by some other, some fee, commission compensation to Gallagher for the work that they do at Council Rock?
No, there's not, but I will allow Christine Brown and Kristen Kots, who I know you have met before, to answer your question. They're here to join us tonight for this exact purpose, to answer any questions that may come up. So welcome, Chris and Chris.
Thank you and good evening and welcome, Dr. Frazier. We certainly look forward to, to working with you and of course, all the members of the school board here at Council Rock. As far as our consulting agreement, the, the amount of $102,000 is offset by any commissions that are received directly from any of the carriers. If in the event a month goes by and we receive the commissions in excess of our contracted amount, the following month, fees will be offset by that additional commission. So our fees would never go above the 102 that is contracted.
Thank you. Are there any providers that you use that may offer a higher commission compared to another that you're bringing to the board or to the district?
As far as commissions? There are, there are different scales and different schedules of commission dollars that are provided by insurance carriers. There generally, when we go out to market and we look at any provider, such as your ancillary coverages, when the district moved their ancillary coverages, life and disability, from a Cigna to a Sun Life, we net out any commission, so no commission dollars are billed in because we have that direct consulting fee agreement.
Okay, and just one other question regarding the contract for our solicitor. I didn't see any item two, term and termination, I didn't see the regular language that we usually have about terminating at the convenience of the district.
There is a termination for convenience provision in there, Mr. Bylick. If you, if you take a look at the sentence that follows the bold sentence, that's a termination for convenience provision. That does the trick, in my view.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions on this particular topic? Thank you. Are there any other questions or anything else for the administration?
No, are you looking at me because of the treasurer's report? So I'll be voting yes on all the items except for the treasurer's report, approval of the, not treasurer's report, item J.
Just wanted Dr. Frazier to know what to expect, but I've got to look right to get there. May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes, with the exception of item J, approval of the treasurer's report.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas, could you read the first item for board approval, please?
Sure. I move to approve the personnel actions and extended school year listing as contained in the attachments to this agenda.
Second.
Questions for the administration? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Gr, um, Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Mr. Bylick, if you could please read number two.
I move to approve the Maureen M. Welsh elementary PTO donation not to exceed $25,000 for the purchase of thirty Microsoft Surface 3, including keyboard covers and a pen for each and a chargeable storage card for use by the students of Maureen M. Welsh Elementary School.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
We've had these discussions before, but the, the money will go into our capital, is it our capital reserve? And then we purchased the, and Matt, we purchased the equipment or the equipment's going to be?
I'll let Matt go too, but it will go into the general fund effective July 1st and then the purchases would come as part of a general fund purchase for computers. I can't really add to that.
So they, they don't go out to bid, these items, or?
Well, we go out to bid. We just went out to bid for the equipment. What they do is they compare the CoStar's pricing, which is a public bid for the state, Pepham pricing, which is a public bid for the state, and then we go out to bid. And what we'll do is we'll specify to the PTOs, "Look, these are the minimum requirements you need to accommodate our network." In this instance, I actually met with the PTO a couple of times and we went through this, so they're very compatible for us. And then what we do is we'll, we'll give them the price that we got for the bid.
Can I ask a question? What made them move from iPads to Microsoft Surface?
The Director of Information Technology for the Council Rock School District might have persuaded them slightly.
That's, that's awesome. When I get mine, will you teach me how to use it?
Absolutely. One of the, what was curious is the conversations we had, and Joe, jump in at any minute because you were there as well, was how they were going to be used in the classroom in terms of the feature sets, what they could do as opposed to the iPads. And they felt that they had a lot more flexibility because it's already compatible with the Microsoft operating system because it is the Microsoft operating system. So the kids, it's the same, you know, in terms of programs that they use. So they made the decision without me being there.
Well, I would say, this is my good Council Rock-educated children, Apple is great and I love it and I, I think iPads are wonderful and they have, but when they leave college and they have to go to a business environment, they've never been on a PC. That is a transition. So I think there's some incredible value and I applaud Maureen Welsh for the kids being able to do both. And at sixth grade level, it's probably not that hard for them to, my age, it might be a little harder, but you know, I, I, I think it's a great thing and that's where I've seen a transition. I know other people in the board have kids of that age, I don't know if anyone else has seen it, but it's definitely different when you move. You've worked your whole life in an Apple world. I mean, they've done Word and Excel in high school and stuff, but really, they all do it on Apple and then they go to a job and they get a PC. It's different.
I'll just point out, there are industries.
Oh, no, there are. There are, yeah, yeah, there are. But I'm, you know, I think it's great if they know both.
I think for me, it just resonates, or Nancy's comments now resonate around our need for a strategy where we've got one building purchasing certain devices and another building purchasing certain devices. It's just, you know, not necessarily efficient for the overall that we, overall way that we deliver education. I know that it's a focus of the board. Nancy, I know you've been beating the drum. I can tell you that folks up here at this table hear you. It's a big, big endeavor to take on. Mr. Fredrickson, you can expect some more questions from us around that ad hoc committee that we've got and what it's doing or to have it start doing some things, maybe more, more formal things. But I anticipate that being a, a, more of a conversation going forward. So I think, I think it's a great thing. So a big thank you to, to that PTO for making that, that investment and also for generating that little bit of conversation today around how we continue to do it even more effectively. Does anybody else have any comments on this particular?
I just have a quick question from Matt. Do you have any concerns at all about conflict of the technology? Wendy had mentioned that young kids can pick these up very quickly, but what about the teachers who are helping them and maybe even some of the kids? Because it is a big, it's a big shift. We've been talking about iPads, 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 and now all of a sudden we have certain.
We have, my philosophy for the district has been that the teachers and students should be able to use any device, anywhere they are, to do anything they need at any time that they need to. So the platform and infrastructure that we've built supports Macs or PCs. In some environments, Macs are incredibly productive. At the TV studio at the high school, they're invaluable. So we've refreshed, in fact, we're refreshing the ones at North this year. In the special services labs, I wouldn't even consider putting in a PC or, or a Surface. The iPads are absolutely the right tool. But in general, a lot of the software that we have runs on the Microsoft platform. So to make it more adaptable, the Surface makes sense, but we're not really dictating to the teachers or the schools that they have to do one thing or another. We're letting them come to us and say, "Look, these are our needs. What's the best way to do this?" And that's how we've been planning and programming and that's how we've been rolling out technology. So I think that the children in the district are exposed to iPads, they're exposed to PCs, they're exposed to laptops. If you talk to a kid and say, "What's technology?", they're going to say rocket ships, laser beams. They're not going to talk about tablets or phones or laptops because they grew up with it. So that to them is, that's not technology, that's, that's just what we have. And that's why they're very adaptable to whether it's a, and that's why all the user interfaces are very similar because businesses have found that when they try to change the Apple card, people don't buy the product because they find it hard to use. So that's why they all kind of are about the same. So, and the teachers are very adaptable as well. You'll go into a, a school and you'll have one teacher that's just immersed in technology and using it with their kids and the kids are doing incredibly well. And then you go into another classroom where the teacher's not immersed in technology, but the kids are actively engaged and they're doing incredibly well. So each teacher has their own style or way that they use, what they feel they need. And, and so the philosophy has been that technology is a toolbox, part of their toolbox. And when they need it, it's available to them when they need it, where they need it, when they feel it's appropriate. And I may have answered your question way beyond what you asked, but.
No, it sounds wonderful, the picture you just painted, but I remember not a short, not a long time ago that we were having a discussion that we needed additional staff in your department to be able to go out and teach the, our instructors how to use the technology and this was a major problem.
There are teachers that could use more technology and there are teachers that would want to use technology, but they don't feel that they have the experience or the training to do that. So I will always say that we're investing in technology, we should invest in the training to support that technology. So there are teachers that would like to do more that aren't. And I think that if you surveyed them, they would tell you, the two comments I hear the most from teachers is, "I wish I had more training" and "I wish I had more time for training." And I don't think that that will ever go away and I think that that's a good thing that they're asking for training and I would like to be able to have the resource to support it. But I think that there are teachers doing wonderful things and I think there are teachers that would like to do more if they had more training. And it's not even the, it's not just the training, it's the co-teaching. They need someone in the room with them when they're doing it the first time to help them understand how to do it better, if that makes sense.
And I'll just add to that piece briefly here. As we talk about the tool itself, I think we're having a dual conversation or we should be having a dual conversation. Part of it is Mac versus PC, munch to Mr. Klein's chagrin over there. But, but the other piece is really just around an entirely different notion of functionality where a tablet has entirely different purposes to it than does a laptop, whether that laptop is, is a PC or whether that laptop is a, is a Mac. And I'll say that as I sit with a, with a Microsoft Surface 3 in front of me and I'll go home this evening and I'll have an iPad sitting there at home. So, so depending on what I want to do will, will dictate which of those two tools that I pull out. But when you're in school, especially in the intermediate grades, the upper elementary grades, and you're doing more word processing, you're doing more in general with the Microsoft tools, I think a laptop, whatever the laptop is, is, is probably a better tool for you as opposed to, I might go home tonight and have a hard time sleeping, so I'll be just surfing and that for a bit. I, I'm more inclined to just pull out the, pull out the iPad in, in order to do that. So, so there's a lot of great things, great apps, great tools that you can do with an iPad, but there are also limitations to the iPad. And so, so of course, there's a cost differential between those as well. It's not as if these tools cost the same amount. So I, I think that all of that strategically needs to, needs to go into the, the analysis of making these kinds of decisions. But good points, good points made here. Just, I would just add that to, to those.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Mrs. Sexton, can you please read number three?
I move to approve change order number GCO3 to ER Studentar Incorporated in the credit amount of $93,173.14, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Taylor? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Number four, Mrs. McKessy, could you please read it?
I move to award the associated agreements for Council Rock High School North Network Operations Center renovations, project bid items A through D to the vendors listed and at a cost listed in the attachments to this agenda, subject to audit. Proceeds to come from capital reserve.
Sorry, we're a second. Dr. Foster? Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
I can't remember the, the pacing of this project. When does it start and when does it end?
It will start pending your approval. Later this month, beginning of next, and wrap up the middle of December, certainly by the end of December because the lease at the El Sac facility terminates January 1st.
Okay.
You're welcome.
I remember being shocked at the number, the, the size of this number, right? $956,333. So what, when is our break-even point? What's, when are we realizing the return of that investment that's going to, either we're saving money or at least breaking even coming out of El Sac? You may, we may have talked about this before, I would just like to hear it again before I cast this vote.
I'd have to ask Bob a little bit more for the amount, but we're, the offset in some ways is the commensurate reduction of the lease in the El Sac building. I think we estimated between five and eight years on the return on investment, but there are larger returns on it too in terms of moving out of El Sac and going into our own space, being able to control heating, air conditioning, ventilation. We've had problems with air conditioning systems going down there that have cost us. So there's some hidden costs that we may avoid having a bigger and more control over the Network Operations Center. By the way, I'm doing the finance piece tonight, just so you know, in Bob's absence.
Let's reopen the budget.
I talk about treasurer's reports, I'm happy to help.
We should be go back to the treasurer's report.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Taylor or Mr. Klein? May I have a roll call vote, please, please?
Mr. Abramson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Bylick?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Motion passes eight oh. Mr. Where am I going here? Dr. Foster, number five, please.
Number five. I move to award the diesel fuel supply services temporary onsite bid number 15-36 to Superior Plus Energy Services Incorporated at a floating price of .39 US dollars over Philadelphia OPIS daily rack average, subject to audit.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. McKessy. Mr. Panero, you're still here. Any questions for Mr. Panero?
And if I may, while Mr. Panero is making his way up there to the podium, very pleased to report, probably should have included it in my superintendent's report, that our propane buses have begun to arrive. I believe the first ones came in on Monday or so. So over there, it writes down, I drive right by it every day, so I was thrilled to get that message. I believe I was on the phone that morning, got that message and I happened to be just a few, a, a very short distance away from it, so I was able to pull in and take a couple pictures with pride. So, Mr. Panero, thank you for the work that you've done already. They've begun to come in. Obviously, we have this issue with some of the microbuses, which is depending motion that we're seeking approval for this evening. But just to let the public know that those buses have indeed begun to arrive.
Any board questions for Mr. Panero?
So what is the OBS daily rack average? I don't know how that compares to what you get when you go to BJ's and buy some diesel.
That rate is about a dollar eighty right now, so we'll be paying roughly $2.20 a gallon for the diesel fuel. Just to, just to sort of update you, Dr. Frazier, we, we'll have.
Just to, just to sort of update you, Dr. Frazier, we, we'll have by the end of the week all hundred of our large buses, the propane buses. It's the small vans that are on a Ford chassis, which won't be delivered till about mid-September, and we won't be ready for them until about the first of October, because they all have to be inspected by the Pennsylvania State Police before you can use them. And most, all of the Pennsylvania State Police that are serving that function are on papal security duty for the month of September. So, it's sort of delaying us, the buses on the road.
We're okay with the big fleet though?
Pardon me?
We're okay with the large buses?
Yes, they're all, they're all being inspected as we speak. So, we're fine.
Any other questions? Excellent, thanks. It's great to see all that hard work come to fruition here, Mr. Pernaro. I may have a roll call vote please.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
Ms. Abranson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Byler?
Yes.
Dr. Foster?
Yes.
Mrs. McKessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton?
Yes.
Motion passes eight oh, and Mrs. Brooks, if you could please read number six.
I move to award the smart board and projectors bid fifteen dash thirty-seven to the vendors listed in the total low acceptable bid column as contained in the attachments to this agenda at a total cost not to exceed thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, subject to audit. I also move to award the athletic medical supplies bid fifteen dash forty to the vendors listed in the total low acceptable bid column as contained in the attachments to this agenda at a total cost not to exceed seven thousand, fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents, subject to audit.
Second.
Any questions? Noting no objections, I'd ask the secretary to record. The motion is passing with unanimous consent. And with that, we will move to the solicitor's report. Mr. Tax?
Mr. Block, the board held an executive session prior to tonight's meeting on collective bargaining. There was an executive session held on July eighteenth on personnel matter, and there will be an executive session following tonight's meeting also on personnel. That's all I have, Mr. Block.
Thanks, sir. For the board, is there any old business?
I have a question. Where, where are we relative to recording our committee meetings?
I'm gonna defer to Dr. Frazier, so I'm not sure we...
Is that, is that still...
Oh, in terms of recording them for the public and being able to report those out, actually, Mr. Frederickson and I have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, and that's one of the items on our list, to be able to talk through.
So, the prospect of having this in place for the start of the school year is, it's still a possibility?
It's a possibility, yes. It's a conversation that we need to have, and if there's, if there's a reasonable way that we can do it, then I think it's a wonderful service that we would be able to provide to our public. But, at this point, being as new as I am, I'm fairly ignorant on all the, as you peel back the layers of the onion, all the issues. So, that'll be part of our conversation first thing tomorrow morning.
Thank you for the update.
And I'll be happy to report back as soon as I can.
And I, I think we should discuss that idea in more detail at some point, because I, I'm completely comfortable with the presentations being recorded. I think that's a great service to the, to the public. I'm completely comfortable with, with really good minutes of what happens at the committee meetings. I'm not comfortable with recording them in the sense that when we're up here, we have to think about every word we say, and when the public is up there, they have to think about every word they say. And we're gonna bring that into our committee rooms, and you pay a price for it. It's, it's not free. And I, I think it really changes the character of the conversation, how easy and pre-flowing the thinking is and the speaking. It will make it a more formal meeting like this, and we may have less participation from the public, which is always dreadfully low, but it, it, it may make it a chillier room. And, and so, you know, I'd like to talk about it before we do it.
I understand, in raising it, I didn't necessarily say, "Let's just definitively do it", it was more in the spirit of, at the, my recollection is, the last time we talked about it, we got an email from Matt with some ideas of what that would look like, and then there was no further conversation. So, I would just like to continue that conversation. And for me, I, I absolutely understand it, and I've been one of the big proponents of not moving our meetings into this room for that very reason. But selfishly, knowing that there are a few academic standards topics that are extremely heated in the community right now, that are coming in September, October, and November, there is, I just wanna make sure that our, our community is well informed as they can be, and our board, who doesn't always, or is not always able to make it to our meetings, have an opportunity to really be involved in these academic standards topics that are very, very timely.
Is there anybody else? I'm gonna go around, so Ms. Thomas?
Yeah, I, I agree, Bill. I, I've been saying that for a while, but I missed, when I was on vacation, a facilities meeting and a lot of information, so I'm left reading it and then hearing bits and pieces of the conversation. I would have had so much more value to hear the discussion and everybody's thought, so I'm a little back and forth on it. So, I agree, we may as well have more conversation about it, but just food for thought is, maybe we could try it, because I agree, if we see that it does shut down conversation, I don't know that the value would be worth it. But, I tried to make up the meetings, I've missed a couple academic standards, I missed that facilities meeting, and you, you miss a lot, and then you come to the board table and you feel like you, you know, really frankly wanna have the whole conversation over again, and half the board, or three quarters of the board, already had that conversation in committee. So, I, I just, we need to come up with a creative way to solve that for us, and, but, keep the public comfortable and keep it an open dialogue and a work session, because I think those committees are really work sessions, and they are a lot more comfortable for everybody to speak. So, I don't disagree with the idea, but I do think there's a huge value add, and I also think we may engage a much greater part of the public if we did record some of them.
Anybody else who has a, has a thought there? Mr. Byler?
Yeah, I, I think everyone knows that I've, I've been an advocate of this, and I, though I have a bit of a concern, you know, that it will stifle some of the conversation, but I think of it, I think it's really how we present it. If we sat here and really met it, the board and the public on opposite sides of the table, it might feel that way, but if we were able to have it a, a, you know, an obnoxious kinda, if that's the right word, kinda camera that sits in the corner of the room and is just re- recording, it's really the conversation more than the video, but I think it's easier just to record the video and have the audio in there with it as well. And it's really, I think, how we present it, so I'm a hundred percent for it. I, there's been times where I, you miss a meeting, and boy, you miss a lot.
Yeah.
You miss one of these committee meetings, and it's, I think it's almost impossible to retrace those steps and pick up on everything you need to do when we have to sit here and make a difference.
I'll be afraid to drink at the meetings, because I think that was an issue, right? And then I have to stay...
Drink water?
I don't think you should.
Never mind.
Water.
Oh, boy. I'll feel the urge to wear a suit to every meeting. I, 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 I agree, it's, it's tough to miss a meeting and get caught up and forget about the homework that you have to do on your own to get caught up, but in, in some cases, especially on the bigger topics, I'm sure that members of this board, in addition to myself, talk to folks in the cabinet about what went on at that particular meeting, get themselves educated to get caught up, and then that takes time from them. So, I, I, I share your concerns completely, Dr. Foster. I, I think it's something that we should look into, I think it's something we should give a shot, and if we feel like we're not getting input, we can always change. But for me, it's really important that we get some consistency to the committee meetings, and that we get them memorialized at, at a minimum. I think somebody raised great minutes to, to start with, to, to ensure that we memorialize what takes place, because, you know, we've had, not, not recently, but, you know, people talk about decisions being made in the dark, that's not the case. Those committee meetings are truly working sessions where a lot gets flushed out, and doesn't necessarily come here, because we've had such robust discussion there, so I'd be in favor of, of doing that.
Well, that's another good point, and I don't wanna belabor this, but we wanna do as much as we possibly can in front of the public, and we have to. And I think giving the public another opportunity to see those, see that discussion on YouTube or wherever we're putting, putting it out there is vitally important. We're gonna get better and more consistent feedback from people, and it's always good. You know, even the, the feedback that we may not wanna hear, it's always good. So, rather than the two or three folks who always come into the committee meetings, we appreciate you being there, it would be nice for somebody to sit down, be able to go to what they wanna hear, and then give us direct feedback.
Excellent, well, it sounds like you two have a conversation, we'll look forward to the outcome of that at the...
We do. Yeah, we'll be happy to report back, and I like the idea of, of beginning it on a trial basis, we'll get some feedback, and make a more permanent decision thereafter.
Great, any other old business? Uh, I know, I'm sorry, Ms. Abranson?
The thought came to mind, these meetings are advertised meetings, are there, so in that sense, they are formal in a certain respect, so I would be in favor of them being recorded. With that said, the purpose of these meetings for me is to impart information to us, and then, we've maybe touched on this in the past, and I know we don't want any more meetings than we have to, but we could have work sessions. We've taken that information and then brainstormed with it in work sessions, which do not have to be recorded, and that way, maybe it's a hybrid of the two, something to think about.
Great, any other items of old business? You wanna go back to the last one, or you have something to...
This is new old.
New old, okay, perfect, we're moving on.
All right, same new old. I often have to report on the IU sort of out of sync with my actually going to the IU. And the IU met on Tuesday night, and out of that discu, as part of that, we have a, an employee at the IU, you might know him, is, we, we all know Jack Brady. Jack Brady has been a part of the IU for years, and is our legislative liaison, and he's just a great guy, and, and he is retiring after many years with the IU. So, our, our thanks and appreciation to Jack for all he has done through those years. Now, his job is to tell us what the legislators are thinking. Well, apparently, he, he can't talk much about that at this time, and so, what they're all doing up there in Harrisburg is just taking bets on when the budget will actually come through. Jack, Jack Brady's bet was September sixth, so he, he thinks we should all just go ahead and pick a date and hope for the best, and maybe put some money on it, I don't know. The IU, though, like other districts throughout the state, Council Rock has deeper pockets. We have more of a reserve to get us through. Actually, one year, the longest app that we've gone without a budget has taken us all the way to December, and yet, we've been able to make payroll. But there are districts that have commonwealth that can't make payroll, and the IU will be affected if this goes on too long, and these are some of the areas where they are affected. Social Security subsidy, transportation subsidies, federal grants that we might not get through the state, IDEA, homeless, money for the homeless initiative, Title One for delinquent children, Title One for neglected children, all Title Two monies, the monies that are supposed to come to the IU from users, and we are owed at this point right now, one point three million for early intervention that's been done over the summer. So, I'm sure that our, our budget contains places where this, this delay in sending money will affect us. Now, because we can use other monies to cover us, because we have, collect, we will collect by the end of August the bulk of our property taxes, and that money is to last all year, so we'll be backfilling with that. I think it's, we can only hope that Harrisburg will soon come to some sort of conclusion for us. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Sexton.
Can I just say one other thing? So, I remember Jack, and he was really, really good, and I know you feel that way too, but maybe we could send a note? I mean, we should've sent one for Dr. Glosso too, as a board, just to wish him well for retirement.
I think that would be a very nice gesture. We had a cake, there was a cake.
I, I figured there was something, but I'm just saying, I, I mean, really, some of the things I heard, and some of the stuff you've brought back and you've sent to us that he found out, legislator, he's really, information we would never get anywhere else.
You won't get that on the, the, he's, his position is being cut essentially, because we get all that information online from some of the services.
But he always had the real deal. He talked to people.
So, he, he really had in, in-depth knowledge, and, and I'm waiting to see if September sixth turns out to be the real, so we'll see.
Any other old business? Any new business? Okay, with that, we'll move to our second set of public comment. Is there any comment from the public?
Hi, Joanne Hinton from Ridgerow, and welcome. I'm just listening to your conversation about recording or not recording your other sessions. I know you guys do a lot of work, you have a lot of meetings. I've been to some of the committee meetings sporadically, so it's not necessarily that you have to answer to me, but one of the things I really enjoy when I do go to these meetings is the unfettered conversation, and the ability for the public to get involved without concern of them being recorded, and also from you having perhaps a slightly more honest, open conversation because you're not being recorded. So, you know, to Ms. Abranson's point, you know, having some kind of hybrid, which I don't wanna say, "Oh, could you have even more meetings?", but I hope that if you, whatever you do, I hope that you give the public an opportunity to go to some meetings that isn't recorded, and get to hear how you guys think, how you proceed on, on areas, and to give us an opportunity to talk without concern about being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Carroll, Newtown Borough. Because I go to the facilities meeting, I already had my sticker shock over the, the cost of the knock going to North. I think it would be nice if, instead of saying as, it will be no more than in the attachment, that in the agenda that you give the public how much that's gonna cost, because by the time the public does find out how much it will cost, you have already started the project. So, in case somebody wants to weigh in, a person shouldn't have to go to a subcommittee meeting to know what you voted on in, in a, a school board agenda. And as a frequent attendee of the facilities meeting, I have to say, I was disappointed in the three meetings where the principals went over how they used their buildings. Oftentimes, they didn't have the data of who was gonna be at their school, special ed, and how many hours they're gonna be in rooms. But overall, I think we continue to ask the wrong question. The Schrader Report says, in the beginning of the report, that it did a study in two thousand and twelve on how we use the buildings, and then we did three facilities meetings asking the principals how they suspected that they will use their buildings in the upcoming years. I don't think the question that should be asked is how we use the buildings. The question should be, how can we use the facilities that we have more efficiently? And that would be in light of the fact that there has been no elementary redistricting for, I think, fifteen years, maybe twelve, in lieu of the fact that some schools lost a great amount of enrollment and others did not, in lieu of the fact that our cost per pupil has been going up and up and up. And I think that the question and the thing that is most challenging for Council Rock is to bring down that cost per pupil. And part of that will be in how we use our facilities, because some of the facilities' cost per pupil are way higher than other facilities, so we should be taking a page out of the books of the facilities that are lower. I don't know what they're gonna be this year, but one of the committees, not the committee I was on, in capital planning, did a cost per pupil for each one of Council Rock's elementary facilities, and it was very enlightening. And that committee also said, to you as a board, when they made their presentation, that the worst thing you could possibly do is to do nothing. And we are moving the knack, we are, you took off the trailers, you did, made a lot of great strides, but we still have not tackled what will bring down the cost per student. And I think that that has to be a high priority when you go forward on what your agenda should be for this coming year. Thank you.
Marilyn Scarp in Newtown Township. To piggyback what Mrs. Carroll just said, the plan that did give you some information on how you could bring down the cost per student was Plan One, and I encourage you to relook at Plan One, because not only did it have the middle school component, which is what the board so far has committed to, but it had a plan going all the way through for the next ten years. If enrollment does drop like planned, what you can do to bring down the cost per student... If enrollment does drop like planned, what you can do to bring down the cost per student and also have efficiencies in the building capacities. So I encourage you to relook at Plan One. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Okay, I just want to make clear for the public that as part of our capital planning process, we do have an annual review, consistent with the work that is going on, in terms of looking at these schools now, and Dr. Frazier coming on board and getting to know the administration. I think you're going to see us start to make progress against some of these questions that you're asking, having gone through the exact process that we outlined. That being said, I know Dr. Frazier also has a comment on another piece of capital planning.
Yeah, and I want to thank the public certainly for those comments. And in addition to the instructional facilities, obviously, NOC here was a topic of discussion and a matter of board action here this evening. We have other non-instructional facilities as well that are also part of this process. And in fact, at one point, there was a motion made and approved for a report to be due now at the July 2015 board meeting. And with this transition and the superintendency taking place, obviously, we're not at a place where we're equipped to have that happen. That said, this report that will be due this fall is part of the larger comprehensive planning Fall 2015 report. It will include not only our instructional facilities, but non-instructional facilities as well. So working with Mr. Taylor and the entire cabinet and administrative team, we will be studying, analyzing, collecting data, and really running a number of benchmark-oriented reports similar to what had been referenced here this evening, and we'll be able to provide that information to the board for digestion and analysis and ultimately a level of decision-making. So I just wanted to make sure that the public understands that, yes, there's a certain focus, and understandably so, on our school buildings, but we have other facilities as well that we're also very mindful of. Thank you.
More public comment? All right, we'll move to board comment. All right, I'm going to end this meeting a little bit differently. I want to ask for, make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Go have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Board's sun goes down.